We'd like to welcome you all out to our Madison County Republican Women sponsored forum. We're doing a little different tonight, but in our Republican Women, we always start with prayer and a pledge. We've asked our Republican Woman, Michelle Adams, to give our prayer. And Pam, Pam, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, she's here and she will lead us in the pledge. First, I just wanted to let you know that the Madison County Republican Women are sponsoring this event tonight. Randy Sutton, who's the Chairman of the Madison County Republican Central Committee, and Daniel Brigman of the Seventy-Six Project will be our emcees this evening. We'd like to work together to have a very fair and fun event. In the past, the Madison County Republican Women have sponsored many forums to help citizens get to know their candidates and become educated voters. The only real difference tonight is that we put the questions in a form of a Jeopardy game and we gave all the candidates the main questions ahead of time. We are extremely disappointed that a group of six candidates, after confirming their attendance yesterday, told us they had that out at the last minute for what we don't understand, perplexing reasons. But we will continue with our event. We hope you enjoy it. And we'll turn the time now over to our emcees. But I do want to say that one of our candidates, Luke Walker, he's a military man and he is doing service this weekend. He would have been here if he could have, and he wants you to know that. You can know more about him by going to his Facebook page. It's Luke Walker for Rexburg. And we'll also give him a chance to answer questions and we'll post that on Madison County Republican Women's Facebook page. Thank you. Now we'll turn the time over to Danielle O'Reilly.
So where's the applause?
I know. Welcome, everybody. As Elaine just explained, we have a game situation here and we want to make it a little more fun, a little more interactive. And so that's what we've done. And we're disappointed with people who haven't shown up. Hey, that's their loss and we're gonna have a great event. And so we're very glad you're coming. Randy, any thoughts you have before we start?
As Elaine said, I'm Randy Sutton, the Chairman of the Madison County Republican Committee. And although this is not a partisan election, we're grateful for the candidates who are here, or grateful for those who are running, or grateful for you citizens who are here expressing interest in the outcome of the city election. So it's good to be with you this evening and I hope you enjoy the event.
Let's talk a little bit of our candidates that we do have here. We have two fine candidates that have shown up, followed through their commitment. Kelly McCannan. And Jacob Flannan. Jacob and Kelly, we're very glad they're here. Why don't you briefly give us a little introduction, maybe, you know, 30 seconds, introduce yourself to the audience.
Okay. My name is Jacob Flannan. I've been in and around Rexburg pretty much my entire life with the Flannan family business. You most likely know my parents, my dad or my uncle. I actually grew up and graduated from St. Anthony, but I've lived in Rexburg about the same amount of time as I did in St. Anthony. And between growing up in St. Anthony with business being here, I was here just as much as I was in St. Anthony. So my wife and I have six children. My oldest daughter is here tonight as well, supporting this event. And I weren't happy to answer the questions. We'll have a fun time tonight. And you can feel free to stay after if you have any other questions as well.
So as you know, my name is Kelly McCannan. I moved here in 2001 from Montana. Actually, we first moved to Ripley. We enjoyed that for a little while. And then my wife got a job up at the college and so we moved to Rexburg. I have been involved in a variety of civic duties and volunteer activities almost my entire life. And I love the form of government we have. I love this country. I served, like Luke, in National Guards. And I applaud all those who serve our country, whether it be in the armed forces or if it's in the military, or I mean, the police force or services. I have five children, four daughters, one son. I have nine grandchildren. And my lovely wife is here with me tonight. I'm excited to serve in Rexburg in this capacity. And I hope that both Jacob and I can answer questions that you might have today and try and put your minds at ease. I hope you have a great time. Thank you.
We did a little hit rock scissors before. Jacob, a new one. So you're gonna go first. We have categories, you know, we don't have a roster back here, but we have a Jeopardy board. Go ahead and pick a category and then we'll start from there. We'll get right to it.
Okay, let's go with the principles of governing. Oh, let's make it easy. We'll start with the 100.
Okay, philosophies of governing 100. What does the term limited government mean to you?
So this is, limited government seems to have different definitions by different people. But limited government really is, the government's here to assist us, right? We're not necessarily set up as a republic with the Constitution to provide the government with power. The power lies within us. So that's the main point of that. Do you have a follow-up with that?
No, we're just... Jacob, explain your question.
Thank you. I believe that limited government primarily means enough government that we don't have chaos, but not too much government to take away the rights and privileges of the people that they've been given by God. Government doesn't give us privileges. Government protects our rights. And we need enough government to protect those rights, but not too much government.
Very good. Kevin, why don't you go ahead and pick the next question?
I'll do roads and transportation for 100, Alex.
Oh, he's rolling over. That's great.
Does our road system adequately accommodate the new growth?
I'm gonna say no. Unfortunately, as our city grows, both from BYUI and the organic growth of everybody moving in and building homes, we have to know that our roads and our infrastructure is going to have to adapt to that. And I don't know the exact best practice to change that, but we all know about the congestion at the interchanges. We understand the fact that there are times when we're waiting through two and three and four light changes to get to the light. And that has to be addressed. And so I would say that we do need to aggressively decide how our traffic patterns need to change so that we can accommodate growth.
I agree with that. We have a huge influx, it seems like every year, of more and more residents, whether it be students or permanent residents, entering into Rexburg. And we do seem to have certain areas within the city, especially out by the 12th West and the new high school, seems to bottleneck a lot as it is also a transition coming in to the college from Highway 20. We also have other areas on Main Street and heading out towards the Walmart on Second East that are also problematic. And I do believe that there are some little changes that we could do with turn lanes and synchronizing the lights are things that we could probably look into to better adapt to that traffic. As Kelly said, sometimes you're sitting in a light for a little too long when there's no cross-traffic. And some of those things, there are solutions to some of those problems.
Jacob, go ahead and select the next question.
Let's just go the same category for 200. You did one better, right?
Roads and transportation 200. Many residents are concerned about the lack of city parking. What, if anything, should the city do about it?
These are, this is also a very good question because some are opposed to too much parking lot space and taking up prime real estate for business locations and things. And there's also, there's also truth in that we are very strapped for parking, especially during the times that the student population was here. We seem to really have a lack for particular areas like the Main Street businesses. So is there an easy answer to this as far as what we need to do or what we should do? I'm not 100% sure, other than we need to look at the grid system and see if there are opportunities to expand lots that already exist and see where we can develop areas that'll most benefit the businesses.
Thank you. Kelly, your response?
I think, like a lot of challenges with growth, it's really difficult. And we have a number of parking lots, but we have a very limited number of spaces downtown. And I think that Heming Village has shown with their parking garage that it actually is effective and can be effective. And I think we might need to look at having a downtown area parking garage. And we would need to explore what the citizens want, how they want it, and maybe to find out the cost effectiveness of that.
Very good. Next category. How about it?
I'm gonna say philosophy of government. Is it 200?
Right, 200, yes. What has shaped your political value system?
I grew up in my grandparents' home where it was very constitutionally based, very principle based. That was the basis. And then being in the military, that assisted as well. I then spent quite a bit of time studying with George Bush College about the foundations of our country and about statesmanship. And then looking at studying the Constitution itself and the writings of the founding fathers. Those combined have really influenced my political thinking.
What's most shaped me, again, would go back to probably my parents and my ancestors for the way that they wanted us to be raised, right? Being honest and true, being benevolent toward your fellow men. And then as I grew older and learned more about the Constitution, learned more about the founding fathers and the responsibilities that were given as citizens of this nation, those are things that shaped me. I've always appreciated the honesty and, to be honest, the fight that our founding fathers went through to give us what we have today.
Jacob, keep hold of that microphone. You're slumped.
Let's just go on down the list then. Let's go to 300.
Philosophy of government 300. It's a daily double.
Well, the daily double isn't gonna be all the candidates gonna answer. So that's what we're doing. So all of you are daily double here today. So go ahead.
If you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
I think that one of the problems that we're running into specifically is the mixed zoning problems that we're running into. And some of that needs to happen, I believe, but some of it, I think, we need to take a careful look at it and make sure that we're not impacting residential areas versus high-density areas and making sure that our business districts are kept within reason. We need to protect the integrity of all those things. I don't know if there's a specific zoning law that I could bring up right here on the spot that I can say that one needs to be changed. But I think we do need to keep in mind what the growth pattern of the city is and where we need to have things placed.
I think that the zoning laws can be beneficial. I also think they can be restrictive. And I think we need to very carefully look at the restrictions that are on people having their own business in a residential area. If it's more of a family-owned business, we need to make sure that we're not restricting that. I also believe that as we look at all the zoning and master planning in the city, having things organized is not a bad thing. But we need to make sure that we're not infringing on the property rights of people who have purchased property in those areas and their intentions for that.
Also, anybody in the audience, I don't, we wanna give you opportunity. If somebody has a pressing question or something that just really jumps at, just raise your hand, get our attention. I mean, we'd love to hear any kind of question you have on anything we've discussed or on. So keep that in mind also. We're on to the next question. Kelly?
Let's try housing for 100.
Housing for 100. Where are your favorite places to spend time in the town of Rexburg?
I would say at food trucks and restaurants.
I don't think you're alone.
I don't wanna give the same answer, but I also do that. You know, in and around Rexburg, we live in the most beautiful part of the country. I've lived in other places. I've lived in Brazil. I've lived in Cincinnati, Ohio. I've lived in Salt Lake City. And to be honest, we have the best sunrises. We have the best sunsets. We have the best surrounding nature. We're a step away from West Yellowstone or a step away from the Grand Tetons. We really have it all here. And I'm very appreciative for the opportunity to raise my family here.
There you go. Jacob?
Was that the 100 question?
That was the 100.
Oh, let's go ahead and do 200 for housing.
You guys aren't getting very creative. You're just kinda, no harm questions. I mean, you're just going through, whatever.
We're warming up.
What should the city do about the lack of affordable housing?
So this is a tough question because there's all kinds of theories out there on how to keep housing affordable. And I mull over this question quite a bit. And, you know, in the recent time that I've been here, the most recent time with this housing crunch that we have experienced, housing prices have gone through the roof. And every time a house is bought and sold and then, or an apartment complex is bought and sold, then that cost ends up having to be made up somewhere. So this puts a strain not only on the landlord or the apartment complex owner to run out to the residents at a cost to where he can still pay his bills, but it also ends up affecting the renter themselves or the homeowner themselves for their mortgage payment. So is there a clear answer with this? I don't know. Assessments are something that should be looked at. We need to make sure that there's opportunity in zoning, as the previous question was asked, that there is opportunity for some of this development to happen and housing to be available. We are growing at a rapid pace and with that is one of those growing pains.
Well, let me, before you switch, let me ask you a follow-up for that. Does the, what role does the city council, you know, zoning, whatever, do they affect this? Do they adversely affect it? Can they help this? Have you talked about that at all?
So the market's really gonna drive the price, right? And I don't think that the city council necessarily needs to be one to interfere with that. I believe that as the housing is made available and as apartment complexes are made available, the availability of those spaces or rooms or whatever it may be is gonna determine what the cost is for those houses. So I do not believe that the city council really needs to be meddling with that type of thing.
I will agree with the fact that the government at any level should not be controlling the market prices of any home or apartment. We've seen in other states where they've tried that and it's a disaster. And we don't need to meddle with that. The housing is really difficult. I have children in Rexburg who are struggling to figure out how to buy a home. The good thing about markets is they fluctuate. Right now, we're in a buyer, or seller's market, we're in a buyer's market, but it's going to come back down. And there are indications around the state that it already is. And so I think that the city council needs to be cognizant of what is going on. But I do not think the city council, or the mayor, or the city government itself should be controlling or meddling with any market forces.
Very good. Next question is yours, Kelly.
I don't know, okay. Economic development for 500, Alex.
Whoa, whoa.
Big fan.
Yeah.
Call us. They're nervous. They're, bo bo dee.
When would you support the use of local improvement districts, LID? And maybe, you know, maybe we need to get a definition of what a LID is for the audience. Maybe, give us a definite, you know, a brief definition and answer.
So a LID, the whole system was set up by the state through statute. So it's not something unique to Rexburg. And it's been promoted as a tool to allow municipalities to improve an area where the infrastructure is crumbling or unsettling or not developed well, to be able to effectively get that developed and the municipality wouldn't have to bear the burden itself. That's kind of a basic definition, maybe. The challenge is, is how it's used and how it's employed. All tools can be used effectively or they can be used as a weapon. And in Rexburg, the LIDs have not been used friendly to the homeowners and property owners.
That would be a good challenge. See what happens when you ask a $500 question and it's audience response?
That's right. The very formula that they're using in Rexburg needs to be reviewed and revised. I'm in construction, so I do for a living. And I don't know about streets, but I know about concrete and sidewalks. And people are being heavily overjudged for their portion. So they didn't ask a question. When it's important, when it gets revised.
With this, I've talked, I've actually talked to homeowners that are being affected with this right at the moment. If you're not aware, the Park Street Improvement, as they're calling it, is going on right now. It's been met with a lot of disaster. Some water lines were busted and I'm not saying that was the fault of anybody in particular. They were mismarked. They were dug up. They flooded some basements. And they've just had one issue after the other. The way it was planned out with the way they were wanting to set sidewalks back and put in an easement with grass. And I understand what they were trying to accomplish was so that the mailboxes weren't just sitting in the concrete on the sidewalk. Because that part of the neighborhood, there is no sod even, easement like there is in the newer parts of the newer developments. With that being said, it's turned into a resource for the government to strong our homeowners into purchasing things that they're not really wanting to purchase.
You finish it. I wanna get some more.
Sure. So this isn't the first time. The Park Street one is not the first. I had neighbors up on the Terra Vista Drive that had the same problem. Some of the concerns, even after the fact, were that the quality of the concrete is not as good as what they even had before. And some of that needed to be replaced again. And so this is one of those things that I would like to see really looked at because it is really affecting people with $8,000 on a bill that a lot of people just aren't prepared or ready or willing or wanting to pay for improvement that doesn't seem to be much of an improvement.
The audience was pretty boisterous about this, obviously. Does anybody wanna have a comment or a question or anything? We'd love to hear from you. Why is this such a hot-button topic for you guys? Back row. Don't be shy, hell.
It doesn't seem fairly applied. There are streets where it doesn't seem like improvement's so important. And there's streets that just seems like it's arbitrary.
Seems arbitrary. Did everybody hear? It seems arbitrary. Did you hear that? Says it's not evenly applied. It seems arbitrary. Anybody else wanna comment on this or a follow-up question? I, you know, if somebody handed me a bill for $12,000 and said, oh, we don't like our sidewalk, I mean, I would have a hard time with that, especially if it's arbitrary. Okay, any comment you have on this?
Yeah, so this is, I don't know if you're on Park Street or a different location, but Park Street's doing the same thing. It wasn't necessarily one of the widest streets in town to begin with. And part of that renovation is that they are narrowing the street. I don't understand that. Now they're going to be eliminating the ability to park on that street. So you go to visit a friend or a relative or a neighbor, whatever it may be, on that street, I don't know where you're gonna park. Because of the way that they've adjusted the sidewalk, moving it back two feet, some of those driveways aren't even long enough now for a vehicle to sit within. And now, so those larger vehicles are not gonna be in opposition to other ordinances in the city of, you're not supposed to be parking on the sidewalk. So we, in trying to resolve one issue, we've created another. And I don't, or multiple, actually. I don't, I don't think that that one was very well thought out. And I don't think that, I also agree that it shouldn't have, it shouldn't cost, it shouldn't be costing that much.
For sure. Maybe, Kelly, you could, I think you had a good point about the flow of traffic. You know, doing something so, so maybe somebody's saying it'll cost as much or maybe we don't need them as much. Is that, do you think it's not a valid point there?
I do. I think, I think that's part of it. Can I, I mean, since we're only two of us, can I share one little reason that I'm opposed to how the LIDs are working?
You can do anything except leave.
Okay. So the LIDs, or I should say it this way. One of the challenges that we, I hear, I talk to a lot of people. I've been knocking on doors and talking to business owners, is how the people are being treated by the city officials. And we live in a small enough community that we can treat each other with kindness and compassion. And there are tough things we have to deal with. There are really tough things. But when, when city officials tell the group of people in Park Street, you do, you have three options and you do these three options, but one of them is if you don't do what we want, we will never come in and help you fix your street. This wall, it's dead low.
Could I continue on that just for one more thing? One of the things that was mentioned was with the narrowing, or either I thought this in my head when you said that, or you actually mentioned it, but it's the snow removal. In my, in my neighborhood, when we're cleaning the streets of snow, I end up with an additional 10 feet of bank next to my house. And a street like Park Street, for example, or Center Street, we could talk about Center Street and some of the disaster that that's caused. But that ends up meaning that not only are you pushing the snow to the side, then we're gonna have to bring in snow crews to remove the snow. And that's an additional expense to snow removal that I don't know if it was very well thought out.
I've heard of the snow removal. This, I've never lived here in the winter yet. And I'm growing a beard. I'm getting ready. I got a good jacket. I've heard, heard rumor that the winter is coming. For everybody here, how many people raised hands? They have an issue with the snow removal, how it goes? Okay, let's, that's at least half or about half. That's, okay. It's interesting. Okay, very good.
Jacob, back to the main selection. It's pretty much it.
Hold on.
Go ahead, follow up question.
I have on Merck Street, Chaska Hill. And it's also a narrow road and there's a lot of traffic down towards the nearby of the car, the hospital. It was on the city calendar to be redone in 2022. It's not on the calendar anymore. And when they talk about narrowing the streets, that kinda worries me because we have cars now that try to get up our hill and they end up coming back down. There's snow on the side of the road. You know, it's just not very safe in the summertime for little kids to play on.
What was your street again?
Birch.
Birch.
It's between the hospital and Lincoln Elementary.
Yes. There's a lot of those little streets up by the hospital that are that same way. They're, they are narrow streets. They're already narrow. And I don't know if, if anybody on the city council currently has looked at those streets and said, those streets we want to narrow as well. I don't know yet. But I do know that they're trying to make some of those improvements without fully understanding the consequences of what is entailed with those. I don't know if everybody on city council has not lived here long enough to know how the snow is removed and how difficult some of those streets are to climb up, as you say. say. They are, they are a lot steeper than they look sometimes.
Kelly, any response?
I, I think that part of the challenge too is that we live in a country where we have a constitutional republic, and the, the people you vote for, if you vote for us, we're your representatives. But we need to find out from you what the problem is so that we can represent you properly. And that, that goes to, I don't know if it's a question or not, but it goes to the challenge of where citizens are not really welcome to testify to the City Council on a regular basis and express their concerns, and that needs to change. You only have six representatives in this whole town. You need to be able to talk to them in a public hearing about your concerns, whether you're angry or you're not, you should have the right to talk about it, and have them actively listen and help respond to fix the problem.
Amen.
Thank you. Let's, let's cut out the 100. Let's just get down a little bit. No more 100. Let's get serious, we only got so much time.
Is there a category we haven't touched on?
Yes, taxes, fiscal responsibility.
Oh, sure, let's do taxes. For 400, this, this would probably be the death of me.
Death in taxes, that's funny.
If elected, what steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Okay, so this, this is a good question. It appears, and I have been privy to every detail of the budget, or, or some of the spending habits of the different departments, but we do need to look at making sure we have contingencies, and maybe a little better capital to draw from for anything coming up in the future. I would say that we need to work out, applying to the needs of the city first, and as much as everybody, as much as I'm very grateful for the parks and recreation, and some of the fun things that the city gets to do, maybe we need to just make sure that we have those funds available in the proper places, and make sure that we've got some of the road improvements and things of that nature dealt with first before we start improvement projects like Center Street, for example. There's, there's some of those things that every budget has ways to thin it out. I ran my own business for the last 12 years. I understand the importance of having a budget, and also the importance of having savings on hand for those times that you need it.
Thank you. Kelly?
I think, I agree with what you're saying, and I also think that it's important that the City Council, they are the ones that have the legal responsibility to take care of the finances in the city, that they operate on a strict budget. And there are primary responsibilities that they have. Those funds need to be spent on the primary responsibilities first. And then, like Jacob said, just like we do in our own budget, we find, we function on principles of finance. And so we don't spend money on the fun and cool things until we have everything covered properly first. And if we do that, and we save for a rainy day, we'll be on a firmer financial footing.
Very good. Kelly, go ahead, keep, pick the next question.
We haven't done economic development, have we?
We've done the 100, the 500.
Oh, wow, okay, we'll do 300 then.
Kelly, what do you believe are the top three most pressing concerns of the business community in Rexburg?
I've talked to several business owners over the last several weeks, plus I've known them for, several of them for a while. One of the biggest concerns they have is they don't want city government mandates on their way there operating a business. Another pressing concern is they want to know that if they express their opinions, if they have a problem, that they're not going to have reprisals or detrimental actions taken against them or their business. The other thing that a lot of people don't realize is that businesses are hamstrung by the city government competing with them. Any government, federal, state, or local, should not be competing with private businesses.
This is also one of the reasons that I ended up running. I had a variety of individuals approach me and, and give me some of their concerns, in particular last year with the response to COVID and, and some of the ongoing issues with that in other areas of the United States and the world. This is a very difficult subject for a lot of people to handle, and I think that we need to show empathy, and at the same time, be able to stand up for our individual rights, especially as businesses and, and the hours that we keep, and the way that we handle our business. A lot of people were concerned last year with, with the mandates, with the fines being introduced, and then possible misdemeanor, and then even the threat of pulling in a business license. And those are the type of things that the government should absolutely not be involved in. We need to allow for this, for free commerce to, to happen, and allow these businesses to make sound decisions for themselves.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions for the audience? Go ahead. Go ahead there in the back, in the back, go ahead.
I have two questions. First, Mr. Visick McCowby, I can't say all the names.
You can't?
Visick McCowby. The first follow-up question is, what reprisals do businesses fear and or actually face when they're concerned?
Yeah, hold on, can you hear? I can't, I can't hear him, sorry. The question was, what, what reprisals do businesses fear in a situation, is that correct? What reprisals do they fear, or what do they face when possibly going against some of these restrictions?
That was the question.
Well, let's get the, hold on, hold on, hold on, let's get, we barely get the first question out there, okay?
Okay, I think that what Jacob explained is, was one of the examples, that businesses, the, the proposed ordinance was that the businesses would be required to have their customers wear COVID face masks, and if they didn't, after three instances, that the city would have the ability to charge the business owner with a misdemeanor and remove their business license and close their doors. That's one of them. The other thing is that there have been multiple businesses who objected to various policies in the city. And when they object to those items, and I'm not going to name names, because that's not appropriate here, when they object, have objected to those items, when they then go to the city with another application, or something else they would like to do, they are not treated the same way as they were before they made that objection.
Well, I, I can, keep your question, everyone, we'll get to it. You know, I saw this in Jackson Hall, the Jackson Hall recently, and this is the county had mandates, every business had to sign up, basically, but the businesses themselves were enforcing it. I, am I to understand that the city is asking businesses to be law enforcement, basically?
Under that, under that proposed ordinance, that was true. They were going to require the businesses to enforce the ordinance for the city.
You're talking about businesses, you're, businesses are competing? Give some specific examples.
Certainly. A few years ago, the city purchased a gym, I'll call it a gym, it's basketball court, weightlifting, et cetera, from a private business owner that was not running the business well, and was, was not doing, anyway. So the city bought that. And, and so we now wanted an indoor gym. Well, one of the things that was added to that gym is an arcade, where we happen to have something called the Creditors, it's a private business, it has an arcade as well. And so we're using tax dollars to buy a business, and buy the equipment, and subsidize it, and then charging a lower price to customers to use that business. And over here, we have a business who's paying property taxes, they buy all their equipment, and they have to run it profitably. And now they're competing with one hand tied behind their back with the city.
There's one other question here near the front.
That was my other question.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, did you want to address that maybe quick for the?
I, on that, on that, on those grounds, I'm in complete agreeance with Kelly. The government has no place in, in coming in, opening up businesses to go against the private entrepreneurship or private entity in, in that manner. The government's here to take care of the needs that we as citizens are not able to fully control ourselves. The road systems and the water and sewage, those are things that the government should be preoccupied with, not how to make a profit on an arcade.
Okay, Jacob, your turn to select again.
Which category was that? We were just?
That was in economic development 300.
Let's do economic development 200.
What, if any, are one or two major decisions made by the City Council in the past three years where you would have voted differently from the majority, and why?
We've already really touched on this, but it's, it's, the, the LIDs are the one, is the one of the things in particular that I disagree with, the way it's being handled. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if there's another instance in particular that I can think of, other than, than some of the proposed mandates and things that were, were brought forward, that in the end, they kind of got away from them, they weren't enforced, they weren't put into law, they weren't put in as an ordinance, but we were left with the understanding that if we didn't do our part, we were going to be forced into it anyway.
Kelly?
One of the things that I would, that's just recent, that would have been dealt with differently if I was there, is that we have a wastewater treatment plant that we purchased a number of years ago for multimillion dollars, and that wastewater treatment plant is not currently functioning completely. And in fact, the employees there are doing alternative methods of treating some of our sewage, so that the EPA will approve the end product. The challenge with that is that we have $6.4 million or so given to us by the federal government as COVID stimulus might for the community. We have a pressing need, our community's growing, there's a lot more toilets being flushed, there's a lot of challenge with that, and that's not going to quit. And so zero of those millions, millions of dollars are being used to fix our wastewater treatment plant, and the City Council has not taken any steps to change that. I would have changed that vote, I would have changed that action, or worked towards it. The other thing I'll agree with Jacob is the LIDs. The LIDs need to be revised before they're imposed, and they need to be very much tailored to the specific needs of the citizens before they're forced on them.
Very good. We're going to come to the end of the, you know, first round of Jeopardy here. Any audience question that we've had so far, that you'd like? Yes, Ms. Powell?
If I was going to count on the council, I would not have bailed out fat cats, and I would not have thought the theater, I think that would have wasted.
And the second part of that, fat cats, first part, second part was what?
I would not have thought the theater, that would have wasted my cash.
Theater. Any comment on that? Bailing out fat cats in the theater, she wouldn't do either one. Ms. Powell says, "No, I'm either one of them." Your comment?
Bailing out, the tax dollars are not to be used to bail out business, ever, for any reason. If I run a business and I do a poor job of it, or the economy changes and I lose my business, that's part of the risk of being in business. Tax dollars are not to be used to bail out a business. I don't care, there's no business that deserves that, and there's no taxpayer that should be forced to use his money to bail out a business.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that. Taxpayer dollars should not be used to bail out businesses, all the way up to a giant corporation such as General Motors, all the way down to a tiny business here in Rexburg. That's, it's just an inappropriate use of, of funds.
Very good. Anybody else have a question before we go to the second round? Yes, Paula?
Well, I, I look at Center Street, and I, those improvements, I think were a big waste of money. Not only that, we're talking about not having enough parking downtown, and they put flower pots in the parking, defeating the purpose of doing, renovating the area, and I think that's one of the chapters we voted on.
Paula does not like flower pots in the parking.
I like flowers on the parking.
Everywhere else. They're okay everywhere else, it's not in the parking. Just quickly, give a comment on?
Yeah, quickly on that, and, and I kind of mentioned that earlier with, with the Center Street renovation, and I agree with you with that. Some of those flower pots were angled, they're square boxes, they're angled to where when a car comes to park at the curb, oftentimes they're rolling forward with that blast, putting your car in park and letting off the brake, you can, you can move a matter of inches. There's been a lot of cars going into the DMV and other locations complaining about them hitting those flower pots because they weren't placed properly. And back to a little bit of the snow removal, that street is a disaster when it comes to snow removal because of the jutouts. There's, there's some nice aesthetics in a way of what it is, but we're not really, we're not helping the problem.
I thought, I thought Rexburg would be very good at snow removal with all the practice they did. I thought they'd be excellent at it. I'm a little disappointed. Randy tells me it is, wait.
If you want me to comment on that, I can, but, but.
Randy says not a shovel, I can play.
Yeah, yeah. Make sure you have a shovel. You especially, if you just moved here, you need to make sure you have a shovel. I would suggest you have a snow blower, but that's just me.
Well, if I have to pay for those LIDs, how can I afford it?
I, I think that one of the other things I want to just comment on about the Center Street debacle, is that this also goes back to the way the business owners were treated when that was being designed and talked about. One of the business owners talked about the loss of his parking spaces, and he was told by the city engineer that, "No problem, it's not our concern, if you stay in business or not, no problem." And he said, "We're not going to deal with anything that you complain about."
Whoa, that's how, that's how they're treated. What was the question?
It was, it was.
Maybe, maybe we don't need to mention, we don't need to mention it. We've already been accused of being unfair, that's what you know. You'll find out, you can find out after this, you're going to have a chance to meet the candidates and kind of talk amongst yourselves. That's the end of the first round of Jeopardy here. I hope we've had a very good round. Thank you, Kelly. Again, you guys are very good to be here, and you've been very informed, right? I think this has been very informative. The next round, second Jeopardy, second round of Jeopardy, is going to be a little more quick hitting. You have some papers in front of you, you have a marker, and you've got a lot of people, I don't, all the people in the back, hopefully they can see it, so try to make your answers big. These are kind of quick questions, some of them are a little fun, some of, most of them are yes/no questions. And ladies and gentlemen, if there's anything on your mind that, you know, strikes you on about any of these things, of course, please raise your hand, we'll stop, but quick hitting, and then we'll go. You, Randy, you want to take away here? See, see how good they did.
Okay, we're going to start by testing your knowledge of Rexburg.
Hold on one second. Now, everybody's watching, don't you dare look on his paper, Kelly.
Testing yes/no.
Okay, the first one is not a yes or no question. Where did Rexburg get its name? Jacob?
No, you both answered.
Oh, you both, both answered, and then hold up your paper.
Yes.
Both answered.
Right one, you're right here.
Oh, you, yeah, we don't use a mic. This is like fifth grade. This is a real test. This is very easy. If you do your homework, you can have a treat when you get home, Jacob.
You just write a brief answer, and then you can explain for.
All right, let's reveal all at the same time.
From Rex.
From Rex.
Thomas C. Rex.
You're, you're.
Do you want me to expound on that for one second?
No, I don't know, Randy, should we? I, I'm confused. What Randy is like?
What Randy is? I do not love a Rexburg. But I believe Jacob is correct, go ahead.
So, so Thomas C. Rex, along with my great-grandfather, came to settle Rexburg in 1883. So, quick turn of events, Thomas C. Rex being the head of the settlement. Rex is a German form of the word Rex, and so hence we have Rex. Rex, Rex is also a terminology of King, so you could also call us Kingsburg if you really wanted to.
Not in your yard, Kelly's answer was also. If you're not in your yard, Kelly's answer was also...
Oh, of course. Don't push. Kelly, where were you on that? That was, that was unbelievable, it was a history class. I noticed that you had your family name in there, Jacob, that was, that was a nice touch.
I lost my no answer.
Okay, question number two. City-owned recreation center, yes or no? You've each got a yes or no response? Okay. Number three, racking on chicken coops, yes or no?
You hesitated there. Uh, Mr. Flann, founder of the city, what's the matter with chicken coops?
I, I will say, there's nothing inherently wrong with chicken coops. I, uh, I do have neighbors that have chickens, uh, not, not in a close proximity per se, and they've done a very good job of, of keeping them contained and things, and I think that's what the concern really comes down to. I don't, I don't see a problem with it at all.
So you're fine with the chicken coops, it's the chicken jail problem?
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I'm getting from you.
No, and, and you know, in, in this, in this point, this comes down to having a garden and having your own resources, uh, you know, there's already ordinances on the books for how many dogs you're supposed to have and that type of thing. I have a dog, uh, you know, so I don't, I don't have a problem.
All right, so the basics of it, yes, you're fine with the chicken coops.
Okay, two more, quick, yes or no answers. Government-enforced mask mandates, yes or no? And always an agreement with these two.
I know. What are y'all, y'all live together or something?
Okay, local option sales tax, yes or no?
Maybe, do we have a definition of that? Maybe we get a definition.
Maybe one of the founders has put these questions together, or do you want to clarify?
It's the ability of the city to impose a tax on its citizens.
The ability of the city to impose a tax on its citizens.
A sales tax.
Is this opposed to like state?
So this would mean the city, the city's...
Not state, city.
So, so the state has its own sales tax, this would give the city the ability to add another level of sales tax onto that, and right now there's not even any limits to that.
Okay, yes or no?
They don't want taxes, Randy.
That's who I want to vote for.
They don't change things, do they? Uh, where are we? Okay, this is a, um...
Number six.
Number six, or does that answer, not a yes or no, but does that answer? Get a new piece of paper. When Idaho became state, was Rexburg the second, fourth, or sixth largest city in the state?
I didn't see, I don't know.
Kelly, Jacob was embarrassing you on the, I don't have history questions.
Let's do American history.
Uh, okay, let's move on. Well, uh, yes or no? Should there be more restrictions on food trucks in Rexburg? Yes or no? Does anybody in the audience have a question or thought about this? I mean, this is, I just heard recently, this is kind of a controversial subject, it's about food trucks. Does anybody have a thought, or, I mean, you applauded, why is this important to you guys?
Go food trucks!
Food trucks. Go food trucks.
It's the issue that the food trucks don't have to make any improvements, they look kind of, it's an empty lot, and it's not like making the community look good.
So you're, you're against food trucks?
So I'm just presenting, you asked why, in any case, do you know what they have to say?
So you had a, okay, well, good point. You have a question right there, sir?
I think food trucks are fine so long as they, uh, are not imposing on the, whatever neighboring to them, and, uh, doesn't, uh, cause a, uh, safety or appearance problem for the city.
Did you, did you guys hear that? He's fine with the city getting food trucks as long as they're not taxing neighboring businesses, I guess, using...
Well, here, here's an example I...
Oh, hold on one, I'm trying to get this on now.
If you got a residential home next to where a food truck is parked, that may be detrimental to that home having a food park right there.
Okay.
So, here, here's another example, uh, a food truck has clientele, and those clientele need to use the bathroom, so they go to the business that's next door and use the business's bathroom, businesses, whatever they've got.
That's, that's a very good point. Do you guys, did you hear that?
Yeah.
Using facilities, using bathrooms, uh, undue burden on, you know, houses, residential houses, those are some of the things that have been brought up in comments.
And, and if that was in fact happening, and it may be, and if it's causing, um, a difficulty for that established business, I, I understand from that standpoint as well, right? Uh, you're, you're an established business, you're a brick and mortar shop, you're paying, uh, taxes on a different level than what the food truck is, uh, the, the property that the food truck is on is being taxed, but, um, does the city need to be in, uh, micromanaging it? No, I do not believe that it should be. Uh, there's some of those areas that it would be nice if they replaced some of the concrete maybe, and make it a little bit nicer of an area, uh, to bring it up to code, but it's really, uh, the market that's driving the sales at that location as is. So for the majority of people, they're not bothered by what's surrounding them, they're, they're, uh, supporting that, that small business.
I'm curious, everybody, you know, obviously, this is kind of seen as a hot button topic, do you think there should be more restrictions? What does all it, yes, you think there should be more restrictions on food trucks? Raise your hand. A couple. No, how about no? The food trucks are fine, leave them alone. We got a lot, we got a lot of people didn't say either one. They don't eat the food trucks.
So, so I guess my question would be, are there food trucks just parking randomly throughout neighborhoods in establishing a, a spot? Because I, that I have not seen. I've seen most of these food trucks, uh, going to the businesses and the, uh, owners of the lots or the parking lots within those businesses, and they're paying, uh, a fee to be able to park where they want.
Very good. Anything you want to comment on, or...
I was just going to say that the, the food trucks are, by and large, already, if they're in a, like the one that's in, we'll fly. Um, they're paying him rent, and they have an agreement already to use his, his restroom, and it's not so much a concern about the customers, it's about the employees. I've gone to food trucks in lots of places in this country, and none of them have a little porta potty here for me. I don't expect that. I grab my food, I get in my car, and I leave. Um, so it's not so much for the, even when you talk to the people who propose this ordinance, it's not so much about the customers, it's about the employees. And my, my question is, if we are going to give the employees the ability to choose whether they wear masks and whether they get a vaccine, then can't they also be smart enough to decide, "I do or don't want to work for a small business that does or does not have a bathroom for me"?
What about porta potties? I think, you know, you have a solution right there, what about porta potties?
They, they can, and, and if they want to have one, fine, but should it be mandated? That's where I struggle with that a little bit. And, and I agree with Jacob, their, by and large, the food trucks are in business-zoned areas, and the only time that I think that's maybe a little different is when we're having something going on in a porta park, and they're parked along the park, and then of course across the street, there's businesses, and, and that's, I don't see that that's a problem because that only happens on occasion, so...
Okay, let's, let's keep it moving. Uh, this is a simple... Go, go ahead, man.
My concern is, uh, they don't have the public, the, uh, the, uh, the city could support the other people, the other restaurant. I mean...
Public healths. You're talking about the public health, or...
Should something else come in and check them? Yes, yes.
Are they not checked? Are, are food trucks not checked?
Yeah, they are, they're, they actually have stricter requirements than they do on brick and mortar stores. And, and the city officials will confirm that.
Okay, I don't, I don't know. You guys can, very good. Next question, simple answer. Are city taxes too high, about right, or pleasantly low? The, uh, three members question here. Can we read the question again, uh, Kelly?
Yes, to the first part.
Are city taxes too high?
Quite, it's, uh, question one, two, or three. Number one, are they too high? Number two, are they about right? Number three, are they pleasantly low?
It's a good thing Randy's here.
The count, then, is coming down.
First one. As I said, one, two, or three.
Let, nobody say you can't follow instructions, Kelly, but very good. Uh, last question I'll ask before we hang over, Randy. Is there any comment, anything that's pretty self-explanatory? Is there anywhere that you would cut it? I mean, are paying taxes too high, where would you cut it? Property tax, uh, uh, food tax, what? If they're too high, where would you cut them?
Well, I think LID fees are a tax. Uh, I think we're already paying property taxes to upkeep, uh, for the upkeep and replacement of the roads, so why are we paying part of that again in an LID fee? Um, that, that's a, that's an added tax. I also think some of the fees that the city charges are too high because those services are already paid for with taxes.
One of the thoughts I had, and it got me, my mind clicked in here, if you own a house, it's just say your, your house costs $200,000, appreciation happens, now the market, now your house is $600,000, now they want to tax you, well, what's, the house is there, why, you know, why do I need to pay the extra? They're basically taxing your equity there, and that always bothered me some.
Yeah, it's all based on valuation, as soon as evaluation goes up, if you're caught in an upswing of the valuation, and the county, uh, assessor comes out at that period of time, you're going to be assessed at that higher value.
Government-enforced vaccine mandates, yes or no? What about private business vaccine, maybe?
I think if a, if a private business owner wants to make those mandates on their employees, they have, they have that right, you know, again, we earlier, I earlier asserted businesses should have the right to determine their own destiny, how they operate, how they function. If that's something they want to do, then fine, they may not have any employees, but, but they can mandate whatever they want, they can mandate me to wear that cute little uniform at McDonald's, I have to wear that if I want a job there.
Go ahead, Jacob, what kind of...
So, so this goes, I've thought about this a lot as well. Now, with a new hire, if you know that that's what you're getting into, and that's what the, the ruling is, that you need to have that, then, then do it upfront. But for the current situation where we have a lot of the employees who are now being, uh, forced to make a decision whether to or not to, where they have already made that, uh, employment, employee, employer agreement, then I do not think that they should be able to do that.
Okay, there's three final questions here, one is an open question, then we'll handle the two yes or no questions. Ricks College was the largest private junior college in the nation when it was established. In what year?
I can see the sweat coming on Kelly's face as we, as you ask that.
The answer, please.
That was close.
1897, 1883, correct answer, 1888.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't 1888. Uh, part of your question that I, I wasn't sure of was, are you saying that it was the largest junior college when it was started, or when, when they left? When they stopped being a college?
Don't make excuses for me, sir.
They were, they were definitely, no, I'm actually, we're like curious myself, uh, because they were definitely the largest junior college when we stopped the sports program.
This, this was when it was, uh, when it was...
When it was first established, it was actually established as an academy, so I don't know where the line was when it turned to college and, and what years of, of that.
That's why I got it wrong.
Why did you...
What is the other one? We know you treat politicians, you can all have excuses. Okay, final line answers. First, should Rexburg City please wear body cameras, yes or no? And have one yes and one no of the yes. And finally...
If I could really quickly say, say this, I would love to see a body camera on, on the officers, uh, I think it's, it shows transparency. I would also like to make sure that we're not overextending a budget in order to, uh, provide body cameras for every officer. It's something that I think should be looked into and, and worked on, I would love, I'd love to see that transparency, I think it would help out, I've been in this situation myself even years ago where, uh, where I think that it was handled poorly, and, and I think we probably all have to some degree. Nothing against our police department, we have one of the best police departments in the nation, this is another reason why I chose to live here in Rexburg.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you, has the police department here, have they come down with an opinion either way? What do they want?
Okay, final question, yes or no answer. Was Ronald Reagan right when he said that the nine most terrifying words in the English language are?
We didn't get any, uh, arguments, man, these guys... Dude, that's why I'm here, that's why I'm here, I just have no life. Very good, that's the end of Jeopardy, we do have one final question, uh, before we get to it, is there any, you know, comment or question? Go ahead, sir.
What do you both feel could be done better for snow removal in the city? What was the last part?
What do you think could be done better for snow removal? Back to the snow removal.
So, I don't know the feasibility of this, uh, I know that there was a time in Rexburg where they had, uh, I can't even think of the terminology, but they had the side shield to where, the wing, the wing, right? To where they could, uh, put that down when they passed the driveway, uh, depending on certain areas, and as you may very well be in, some, sometimes they pass by and I've got half a foot, and then there's other times that I've got four feet that I have to dig through. So that wing would be, would be an excellent addition to our, to the snow removal, uh, equipment, a lot of this is contracted out, so I don't know what avenues would need to be taken there, but that's one thing that would be definitely beneficial.
Very, go ahead, sir.
What are your thoughts on, since we're on the snow topic, what are your thoughts on ice melt which throws vehicles versus spreading lava rock, which is also...
Ice melt versus lava rock on snow removal?
Can I mention, can I, uh, reply to the snow removal first? Is that okay? Because I didn't get a chance. I think the weight idea is really important, I've seen that in other cities, and it works well, but I've also seen in some areas where it's a little tighter, or maybe they can't do that, where you have the road grader coming through, and then you have somebody with a loader or, uh, a backhoe following right behind them and taking care of that, and it wouldn't take that much extra effort to do that, and it's going to alleviate a lot of consternation for the citizens. Um, so then ice melt versus lava rock? Uh, I have to be honest now, but I've never seen lava rocks during the road, maybe it was, but I've seen a lot of ice melt.
So, so for years, the city used to spread lava rock, uh, because it's readily available, it's at low cost, and it does not corrode your vehicle and make it rust like in the western states.
Okay, so it's really crushed, it's like, maybe sand, maybe? I mean, or...
Okay.
The science, the science is not in order, what, the difference...
Oh, okay. Well, I was thinking, then you threw it up and you cracked my windshield, but, um, I, I agree that anything, anything you're using, whether you're using ice melt or salt or the, you know, the liquid that they spray in there, uh, or the lava rock, there's going to be hazards with any of it. Um, I think that, I think that going to a point where we do some experimentation, because I don't, I really don't know the answer, but I think, you know, try to figure out, do some, do some studies and figure out, try it here, and try this over here, and find out which works better.
Jacob, you, you a chemistry expert, you, you, you work at a general, maybe?
What year did lava rock?
Didn't you know something about lava rock?
What year did lava rock come to Rexburg? It's been here forever, so, uh, so I agree, for, for lava rock, I think the reason that they probably got away a little bit from the lava rock was because it did make a, more of a mess, maybe needing to clean up, eh, once winter was over. I don't know, I don't know what the real reason was that they stopped using it. Uh, I do prefer something that's non-corrosive, uh, I'm an old car buff, I guess you could say, I, I love my old cars, I would love to preserve them, I don't drive those ones very much in the winter anyway, so it doesn't, doesn't really affect those cars now, but it has in the past, when, whenever you go to, to purchase a vehicle from say, Salt Lake or, or other areas that do use, heavily use corrosive, uh, ice melt materials.
Very good. What, what is, I'm curious, what is your opinion, ice melt or lava rock?
I think lava rock is better.
You like the lava rock?
Yeah, I mean, one or two, but here's with ice melt, and you, there's a noticeable difference, uh, you're...
On the car, on your car?
Another thing that I've noticed with the lava rock as well is it seems to be a little bit better granulated to help on those steeper, uh, hills and streets when you come to a, to a stop sign or a hill and whatnot.
Everybody who's here, hands up for ice melt. Hands up for lava rock.
Big ones.
Everybody likes lava rock. They like the lava rock. They get up, maybe Burke Street, if it wasn't Burke Street, you have, maybe the lava rock, well, you'd be able to get up. Did you hear that? Does the city council approve each and every LID project?
Yes, by law they do. And the problem with the way that we're handling it is the LIDs are set up in two separate ways to come forth. One, either 60% of the residents come together and request it, or a vote is made, and either, and a project is presented to the city council, and a vote is made by the city council to approve it. We definitely need to get away from that mentality of the city imposing LIDs on individuals where it was really set up to benefit the residents if they came together requesting an LID.
And all of that is exactly correct. I want to add one thing to that, though. And that is that if the city council would actually listen to the citizens' concerns before they make that vote, and not just listen to bureaucrats who tell them this is needed, there's a lot of things that would not negatively affect people, or they're not listening.
Ladies and gentlemen, we only have one more question left. Do you have a quick comment, maybe?
I just wanted to tag on what Kelly said, especially because we brought up the COVID funds or the ARCA funds. And so, because the bureaucrats are actually steering city councils into using that money, it's actually going to broadband. And so, I talked to the mayor, and I said, why hasn't there been a public comment about this? $6 million is a lot of money, and so they've gotten it in two pots. And so, $3 million is going to broadband. And he said, well, if we did everything by referendum, we'd never get anything done. And so, I think the citizens really need to come together to say, we need to know what's going on. And the bureaucrats in city council offices shouldn't be making the decisions.
So, your point was not really about a referendum, or about taking input, kind of a...
Yeah, just backing up one more question.
Very. And one of the current city council members, when I brought this up at a meeting, city council meeting, he came up to me after the meeting, and he said, Kelly, we don't have time to listen to the citizens. That's one of the city, city council members.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think we should round with applause for our two quick comments.
Very united in their responses. A good thing.
And tonight is the first time we've even met.
Oh, very good. We have one final question, ladies and gentlemen. Afterwards, Jacob and Kelly are here, you know, talk to them, specifically, get to know them a little better, encourage them. We're sad the other candidates didn't come. I mean, I think we put on a good form here. I think these were good questions. I mean, you were great there. Shows very well from Kelly and Jacob for keeping their commitments, and very glad to have you. One last question. We kind of touched on this a lot, but it seems like the biggest thing in the world right now, not just in the United States, there are, there was a question. Do you think public health concerns like the current pandemic justify the violation of individual rights? Where is that line? And how can the city government promote public health without violating unillegible rights? Where is that balance? Go anywhere you want to, think about it for a second, and then, since Jacob started, we'll have Kelly start first with this. So, think about it a second. Go anywhere you want. I think it's one of the biggest questions in the world, and it's dominating the discussions, and I think we do need to discuss it. So, just kind of where you think, whenever you're ready, Kelly.
I think, first of all, mandates do not work in almost any situation. If you have children and you mandate things, you find out the pushback is not giving the result that you want. Mandates from government are not productive, and they don't get us to the end that we want. And any level of government who says to me, or to Jacob, or to anybody who owns a business, your business is non-essential, those government individuals either be reeducated or removed from it. I think the city government can promote good health by simply suggesting that you talk to your trusted physician, that you do your own research, and you act responsibly. I don't think the city government has any right to invade our personal privacy about medical decisions for any reason.
I don't know if I can say it any better than that or not. I completely agree. The government doesn't, I, it really comes down to medical freedom, right? Whether it's a vaccine, whether it's a mask, whether it's, you know, whatever, whatever it may be, we need to be able to, as Kelly said, go to a trusted physician of our own choice, have that discussion with that physician, work out the pros and the cons, weigh the balance of whether it's going to be beneficial, more beneficial, or less beneficial for us, and then make those decisions on our own. The only time that, any time that you are making a decision for somebody else is if you have medical power of attorney. And that's for somebody that's not able to make those decisions for themselves, that aren't able to, whether it be a child or somebody that's already given that permission to a child that may be elderly in years, and has allowed their child to have that medical autonomy.
Thank you. One final comment or question, and then we'll wrap up.
What do you think are appropriate ways to push back against federal or state mandates or unconstitutional requirements?
Did you guys think of mandates for the... Did you say? What was the last?
How would you push back against federally mandated?
I think one of the first things is our, the supreme law enforcement officer in this county is the sheriff, and we need to make sure that we communicate with the sheriff. He can stop by the way our government is set up and the way law enforcement is structured. The federal government does not have the authority to come to Rexburg where, should say, Madison County enforce anything. The sheriff is the only person who can do that. So, we need to understand our sheriff. We need to elect good men or women as the sheriff, and we need to make sure that they are willing to stand up for our constitutional rights and stop the federal government. That's where we stop it, is right here in Madison County.
Jacob, anything to add?
Kelly's absolutely right. The men that hold the most power in the country are the sheriffs of the individual municipalities. We need to make sure that we're, get to know them and understand where they stand on some of these things. Local law enforcement, for the most part, at least from the ones that I've spoken with, have had our back. They don't want to enforce these types of mandates. They've already voiced an opinion on not, on not coming into businesses and removing somebody because they don't want to wear a mask or whatnot. I think one of the biggest problems comes down to some people feel less protected if everybody would, would wear a mask, or they feel like somebody's trying to, maybe even trying to get them sick, and that's really not the case. If we really sit down and talk with one another, we usually come to an agreement and an understanding that we really do care about each other. We also care very much about our individual liberties and the rights that we have in this country. There are many countries right now that are struggling with things that start off as a very little incidence and have grown into government overreach.
Thank you. Not only to the candidates, and to all of you who attended this evening, but special thanks to the Madison County Republican Women's Organization, Elaine Kingsburg. So, thank you, that's a very valuable time to be present this evening and making it a helpful event. And we thank all those who have been involved in our preparation, participation, and good, thanks to you all.